And please let the record note that with the exceptions of Mr. Ramos, Mr. Dabari, and Ms. Becerra, all council members are present this evening. We've got minutes of the meeting of April 1st without objection. They'll be approved. Seeing none, we will move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybine.
Thanks. We have a short slate of committee meetings. This coming Wednesday, the 10th of April, the Public Works Committee will meet from 9:15 to 9:50 in the morning. Administration and Finance will follow at 9:55 to 10:10. Public Safety and Health Committee will meet from 10:15 to 10:45. Land Use and Planning will round out the day from 10:50 to 11:45. All those meetings are being held right here in the City Council chambers at 140 West Pine.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to the committee's schedule? Seeing none of those, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. It's your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. General public comment. Ms. Matthew Jenkins.
Candy Matthew Jenkins, 1211 Cooper Street. I want to say a shout out to Peter Christian from KGVR Radio for tuning everybody on to the documentary Seattle is Dying. I thought it was good. It's a foretaste of what's going to happen here. I'm reading for the Soviet Art of Brainwashing: Psycho-Politics as the Art of Mental Healing as Read into the Public Record on the House Un-American Activities from 1936 to 1939. In case of a hearing or trial, the awfulness of insanity itself, its threat to society should be exaggerated until the court or committee believes that the psycho-political operative is vitally necessary in his post and should not be harassed by the activities of persons who are irrational. An immediate attack upon the sanity of the attacker before any possible hearing can take place is the very best defense. It should become well-known that only the insane attack psychiatrists. The byword should be built into society that paranoia is in a condition in which the individual believes he is being attacked by communists. This defense will be found to be effective. Part of an effective defense should include society's entire lack of any real psychotherapy. Any real therapy must be systematically stamped out since real therapy might possibly uncover the results of the psycho-political activities. Jurisprudence in a capitalist nation is so clumsy that the cases are invariably tried in their newspapers. We have handled these things much better in Russia and have uniformly brought the people to trial with full confessions already arrived at having been implanted before the trial takes place.
Any other general public comment this evening?
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. My name is Carrie Britton, B-R-I-T-T-A-I-N. I was here last Monday to talk about, well, I'm also speaking of 1016 West Broadway, but I was here speaking about some of the effects of homelessness in our area. I have to say wow, really. It was pretty amazing, the support that I received, the phone calls, police patrols picked up, some of the questionable vehicles left. I've had the police come call and stop by and give me their personal numbers in case something were to arise that needed to be taken care of. So appreciated. The Pavarolo did a cleanup in the neighborhood. That was great. I heard from the West Side Neighborhood Association. Obviously, they, it seems like they've been talking to council on a regular basis, it seems, but if that's the case, then I don't understand that why it got to where it went. If it was something that's a regular conversation, I don't know why it hasn't been dealt with. I guess the only people I really didn't hear from were my council members in the ward, and maybe they don't deal with commercial properties. I don't know. So that was kind of, I guess, a little sad. But I just want to make sure it's not a one-time deal that this is being taken care of. It should be an ongoing resolution, and it's something that we all need to work on. Ms. Matthews mentioned Seattle is Dying. I don't know if you've seen that. It's by Eric Johnson of Como. It's on Facebook. Pretty interesting. And, you know, I just went through Portland. It was kind of the same situation, very sad. So I really don't want to see Missoula into that situation where there's tents popped up on the sidewalks. That is not a good place for us. I saw, you know, the library was given to the city. It would be kind of maybe that's a place for some transitional housing for our veterans. I just saw a documentary or Face the State this past Sunday, and Word was on there, and they were talking about upcycling housing and buildings and so on for transitional housing. So that might be a consideration. Maybe the city's willing to donate that back to Word. So they can do something. I see constantly veterans on the corners begging for money. So maybe, you know, we need to do something like that. CBS News had something on Sunday. Minneapolis, so just, I guess, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Minneapolis has reduced their homelessness by 40% by creating a registry for veterans. There's a whole, and so, I mean, Minneapolis would be a great place to start, to maybe help us, help our community. So I hope maybe we can follow this example, and I just think this needs to be an ongoing discussion, an ongoing solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Britton. Other general public comment this evening?
Hello. My name is Erica Byrne, and I'm a Neighborhood Ambassador at the University of Montana.
My name is Chloe Luffeholtz, and I'm the Program Manager for the Neighborhood Ambassadors at the University of Montana. And we're just here tonight to say hello to you all and just let you know what we're up to and how we're helping neighborhoods across the city and to invite you all to an event we have coming up this Sunday. So as Neighborhood Ambassadors, we have about five of us right now, and we just work to foster really healthy relationships in the university district between student renters and homeowners. We accomplish this through putting out a weekly newsletter that one of our ambassadors, Anna, works really hard on. We also do a lot of outreach on campus, and I think Erica and I were talking earlier, we've really increased our outreach on campus this semester and made sure that students really know what their rights are as renters and just how the resources we can offer them. We also do Sunday sweepers in the fall, so we clean up trash after the football games. I think that's one of our most popular programs. Yeah, so we do a lot, and we're excited to work with the city and really help out in any way we can. We think Missoula is a good place to be a student, and it's a good place to live, so.
That's true. And as Chloe said, we have the day coming up this Sunday. It's going to be from 2:00 to 4:00, and it is our annual party in the park. So it's going to be held this year in Bonner Park, and it's basically a space where you can come and get together as a community and meet your neighbors, hang out. We have a lot of fun activities. We have food, music. It's just going to be a really fun time and a really great way to be involved. So we hope that everyone here can attend and support the community. And we have flyers, too, so if anyone would like to grab one of these, we'll set them outside for you guys. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you both. Mr. Moore.
Bob Moore. Sometimes I wish I was younger so I could have a spirit like that. Last Wednesday, I went to a committee meeting where Ms. Buchanan gave her annual report on the MRA. It was not a pleasant thing to experience. I'm going to read part of this article written by David Erickson of the Missoulian. Downtown success, Hart, City Council lady, said the success of downtown Missoula is an example of how TIF works, even though it takes decades, decades, to realize the impacts. Successful cities are intentional, and that's what happened four decades ago, decades ago. We had a super story. Buildings downtown were boarded up, literally. She noted the residential and commercial buildings, wherever they were, were vacant, and there was high crime in the area. It was very different Missoula, and we took a leaf of faith to set Missoula on a different trajectory. Buchanan, Ms. Buchanan, director of the MRA, told the board that 20 million invested in downtown leveraged 200 million in other funding sources, and she estimated there's a billion dollars worth of investments there now. If you didn't have a clue of what you were doing or what this really meant, you might think this has really been good. It hasn't been good. It's been a complete 1,000% failure. You don't believe it? Go to the food bank, and they'll tell you that one family out of six goes there monthly to get a free food handout. So we live in a city that has given millions and millions and millions of dollars to the wealthy, such as Mr. Lambros, as reported in this article, South Bank, the Southman Bank, coffee, Starbucks Coffee. They need the money. The Residence Hotel down here on Higgins, and on and on and on. We've been helped pay for changing a laundry mat in a convenience store to a casino. Gave them $50,000. That's what we're doing with taxpayers' money, and in my opinion, you should be ashamed of it.
That's three minutes, Mr. Moore.
California at one time had 400 of these districts, 400. They shut down every one of them. A local governor, probably as liberal as most people here in Missoula, shut them down, all 400 of them.
Happy to hear more next week, Mr. Moore.
Said he couldn't take them anymore. Is it already up?
I'm sorry?
About three minutes is up?
About a minute ago.
Anybody, everybody, please read this article. You'll love it.
Other general public comment this evening? All right. Seeing none. Yes, sir?
I wanted to be patient, let others go. So hey there, folks. My name is Gillian Wigan, and I live in Ward 3 here in Missoula. And this actually wasn't on my speech here, but since a couple of people have mentioned it, I want to bring up some things about Seattle is Dying, the documentary. Most specifically, that it came out about a month ago by Como, and it since has been, like, largely redacted and discredited by better journalism. So if you're going to watch it, as people are suggesting, do it critically and maybe look at the other research. That's just general public comment to the public. Let me begin. Recently, I've seen a string of articles surrounding businesses neighboring the PAVE. So today, I'd like to shift gears a bit in addressing the struggles from Missoula's houseless population. I will start with a brief personal story that by the end will point to what seems to me like obvious solutions to these businesses' complaints. At roughly 2:30 a.m. on August 17, 2014, I was arrested in the alleyway beside the Badlander. My charges were public urination and obstructing a peace officer. I'm not here to tell the whole story of my brief incarceration, but I will reassure all of you that charges were dropped after a few length, after a lengthy legal battle. Instead, I will touch on what got me there in the first place. I had to urinate, and none of the bars would let me into, none of the bars would let me run in to use the bathroom quickly. I understood their reasoning. It was closing time, and the workers wanted to go home. So with no accessible toilets and a long walk ahead of me, I stopped briefly to relieve myself behind a dumpster. About 10 minutes later, I was in handcuffs in the back of a police car. The reason I had been stopped boiled down to the fact that there were no public restrooms nearby, and I decided I wasn't drunk enough to soil my pants. Bear in mind, this was before the Portland Lou had been installed outside the art museum. I wish y'all would have put that in sooner. It would have saved me a few thousand dollars. Like my own debacle that summer night, those who don't have the privilege of reliable housing also can find themselves without a place to use the restroom, and in turn, it is not uncommon to answer nature's call in public areas. If Missoulians are frustrated by this fact, it is a sign that we need more public restrooms and waste disposal sites around the city, and they need to be open all year. Last winter, I went to use the public bathroom outside the art museum at Portland Lou, and I found a funny sign. It read, "Closed for the season." I chuckled to myself and took a picture to put it on Instagram. My question was, and I use saltier language, but what is bathroom season? Have I been doing it wrong my entire life? See, public restrooms are useless if they are locked, and as a result, people will relieve themselves outside. I know, I've done it, and frankly, I'm sure almost everyone in this room has, too. There is other waste of concern as well. I understand that as a result of untreated addiction, it is not too uncommon to find used needles and other paraphernalia on our city streets. So far as I know, there is only one place to dispose of needles safely, I'm sorry, I keep puffing into this, for people suffering from addiction. If there are more, please correct me, but either way, there aren't enough. They wouldn't be there if there were. If Missoulians are upset about excrement and needles ending up where they shouldn't be, let's as a city work to make sure that there is greater availability of the places where they should be. I'm asking the city to add more public restrooms throughout the city, ones that are unlocked all year and all day and night. I'm asking you to install safe needle deposit sites for the public throughout the city so that people are able to make responsible choices with how they dispose of their waste. It's a relatively simple solution that handles problems by providing resources people clearly need rather than stigmatizing those that need it because they, that clearly isn't working.
Other general public comments this evening?
Good evening. My name is Andy Helsel. We're from Ward 2. This is my daughter Eleanor. First, I wasn't planning to, but I have previously commented in this chambers on the issue of the unhoused folks in our community, and I want to just stand in solidarity with Gil and his statement, though I've never been arrested for public urination. I'm here again before the City Council to talk about waste. First, I'd like to acknowledge what the city and the county have done. You all hear more complaints than compliments, I'm sure, and as a parent, I get it. So I will say that first, I am grateful for the ways in which Missoula and Missoula County have been working to address the issue, the challenges facing our planet. Thank you for your efforts in developing and beginning to implement the Zero by 50 Zero Waste Plan. Thank you for your commitment to 100% clean energy by 2030, which I understand will probably be celebrated by many of the folks in this room this evening. These are important steps. It can't be ignored that you have begun to show a commitment to addressing these essential life and death challenges. But I scoff some at language such as swiftly, used by Martin Kidston of the Missoula Current today. To act swiftly implies quickly and without delay. Plenty of delay has been behind these moves. There continues to be delay in response to ongoing requests for a plastic ban in this city. I would love to use the word swiftly to characterize your response to these words, but right now, I don't see you acting swiftly. 2050, again, remains a very long time from now. Chances are that the planet will not be livable at that time, which means this young lady who has some words to say tonight would not have a place to live safely. Friday night, I enjoyed one of Missoula's many arts and culture events, First Friday. My husband's company Historical Research Associates presented their interpretive project at the hotel in the old Merck Building. When I arrived, he asked if I wanted a glass of wine. I told him no because it was being served in a plastic cup. Then, as we were leaving, I expressed concern to the bartender that the trash was being put into a can where he was clearly recycling. I assumed that can filled with plastic cups and beer cans was, in fact, for recycling. The bartender looked at me like I was stupid and said, "Oh, yeah, but that's not recycling." I was astounded, and I told him so, and then went to the front desk and told them so. This is a new business in this town, one in which this city council approved, and they're not required to recycle. So I ask you, what's the cost? What's the price of recycling? What is the cost, the price of not recycling? Why isn't this business being forced by laws implemented by this city to recycle? The ironies of this are endless. In this system, we often think about the price of things. How much for a bottle of water, for a beer, for a plastic bag to carry my groceries to the car? But here's the thing, the price is not the cost. The cost of continuing to use single-use plastic is birds, fish, and turtles mistaking tiny pieces of plastic for food and then starving to death. The cost is 8 million metric tons of plastic entering the ocean each year. The cost is whales dying on beaches with plastic in their stomachs that weighs as much as you or me. Approximately 400 cities, counties, and states nationwide have taxed or banned plastic bag use one way or another. It's way past time for Missoula to be among them. Thank you. Eleanor, would you like to say your statement? Okay.
Shall I start or go?
Carrie, it's ready?
We'll maybe try again later. Thank you. Other general public comment this evening?
Hi, my name is Latissa Romero, and this is my daughter Amelia. I'm also here to thank the recent effort and for clean energy that you guys will be approving, hopefully, officially. Thank you for that. And, yeah, so I'm just here again to press urgency in banning plastic, single plastic in the city, bags, grocery bags, and plastic bottles. It's, it's, we're past long overdue that. I think we can definitely be, again, creative enough to get this done. Other cities have done it as well, and like the comment before me, you know, we have a new hotel here, brand-new hotel. There's no reason for them to be not recycling or at least being, you know, told that you can build here, yes, you can build here, but don't bring all this trash alongside here. You've got to be responsible as a new, you know, business here, to be thinking forward, to be thinking ahead, generations ahead. I have my daughter here. Zero waste by 2050? Too late. The plan is not going to be livable by then. We're in a really sense of urgency here, and I'm just here to continue, and I will continue to be here to make sure that, as elected leaders, that we continue to fight for our planet. We only have one, and we only have one chance. So priorities should be just our planet, our environment locally here, and I know we can do this. We're really creative. So thank you again, and just please think of our children long-term. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you. Any other general public comments this evening?
Hi, my name's Kelly Lake. I live in East Missoula. Kelly Lake, East Missoula. I'm just really excited to see there are no single-use water bottles. I've been to other municipalities, other meetings, and there's, that's all there ever is, so I'm stoked about that. And I own a business in town, and I've recently pulled out of distribution and stepped away from the capitalist model because all money funnels into single-use plastic. That's why people don't make the choice. I'm simply asking you guys because of your stance in the community and how people look up to you to investigate single-use plastic and find, continue to find ways to step away from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda items. On that agenda, we're approved unanimously in City Council standing committees. We save a little time on Mondays by considering these items all at once. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items allowed, so those in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and we'll invite comment before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
Thanks. Tonight's consent agenda has eight items. The first, as always, is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable in the amount of $462,059.48 for checks that are dated April 9, 2019. Number two is to adopt a joint resolution of the City of Missoula and Missoula County to formally commit to take the necessary steps to power the community with 100% clean electricity by 2030 for the Missoula urban area. Number three is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Babak Raskefard, I hope I got that right, to the Police Commission for a term to commence May 1, 2019, and expire on April 30, 2022. Number four is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a three-year agreement with Missoula County to provide sexual and violent offender registration services for individuals whose home addresses within the city limits in the amount of $54,657 per year with a 3% per year increase. Number five is to adopt a resolution approving the expansion of the Missoula wastewater service area boundary to include and provide municipal sanitary wastewater treatment services, excuse me, to property located in the southwest corner of the intersection of Cone Ranch Road and Mullen Road, legally described as tract A of Certificate of Survey Number 3554, a 1.38 acre, 1.38 acre tract in Section 9, Tract 13, I should say Township 13 North, Range 20 West, Principal Meridian, Montana, as shown on Exhibit A of the resolution. Number six is to award the bid for construction services on the Wyoming Street Water Main Extension Project to Doug Smith Grading for an amount not to exceed $39,168, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Number seven is to adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council preliminarily approving the fiscal year 2020 conservation and stewardship of open spacelands mill levy budget and directing the mayor and staff to prepare for July 1, 2019 implementation of the preliminarily approved budget, including capital funds. And finally, number eight is the first reading and preliminary adoption of an ordinance. City Council this evening is setting a public hearing on April 22, 2019, and preliminarily adopting an ordinance to rezone the south 66.8 feet of lots 12 and 13 in Block 16 of the Smith Edition Number 4 subdivision, which is located at 3110 Grant Street in Section 32 Township 13 North Range 19 West from RT 2.7, which is a residential zoning district that allows two unit townhomes to RM 2 residential, which is a multi-dwelling zoning district based on the findings of fact in the staff report, referring that item to the Land Use and Planning Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Anyone in the audience care to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda this evening? Sullenberg?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Amy Sullenberg. For the record, that's C-I-L-I-M-B-U-R-G, and I'm with Climate Smart Missoula. So not surprisingly, I just wanted to come here and thank you for the unanimous support during the committee of the whole meeting for number two on the consent agenda, the joint resolution for, to move our community towards 100% clean electricity. And we were able to provide a presentation on Wednesday with my colleagues Diana Manetta from the county and Chase Jones from the city. We're, you know, here to answer any questions if those should crop up, but also just thought for the record, we, also for folks that were not here... for the record, we also—for folks that were not here at the meeting on Wednesday—we have a support letter that's signed by over 400 individuals, businesses, and organizations, and then some individual letters that were brought forward and given to us to give to you folks from the Missoula Federal Credit Union, Providence-St. Patrick Hospital, and American Lung Association, all in support of this effort. So with that, I just wanted to, again, thank you and look forward to tonight's vote.
Thank you, Ms. Sillenberg. Anyone else on the consent agenda?
Candy Matthew Jenkins. Since Missoula has successfully accomplished the UN Agenda 21 situations, we're taking care of the homeless, we have sustainability, you know, all these things, and the drugs and the PAV and all of those things that are so good—the free bus rides and everything that figure into the UN Agenda 21. I'm not surprised that the city council has decided to accept jumping ahead with Agenda 2030. That's what it's called, UN Agenda 2030. And that's—we were at a soft socialism. Now we're into complete communism, where you take over the city and the county and mandate what's going to happen with all production, all life in Missoula, and you're saying in a resolution that every citizen in Missoula is going to acquiesce to this situation because you said it and the county said it. But that's not so. I am an individual, and I don't go along with it. And many other people probably aren't going to go along with it, but they're going to suck up just so they can stay in business. So this is total communism on the part of the city council and the county commissioners, because this is not liberty and freedom for the individuals of this community. You will be dictating our comings and goings and how much energy we can have or how much energy we can't have. I hope you're really happy, because you've really ruined a place that I love, came here in '71, and this place was a good place. Improvements have been made, but you've destroyed the community as we were. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on the consent agenda this evening?
I want to just say that I agree with her 1,000%. You've destroyed and are destroying the city of Missoula, millions and millions and millions of dollars to the wealthy with no benefit to the average citizen. And I would really appreciate it if you would listen to what she said and my thoughts on the same subject, instead of just dismissing it like y'all do if you don't agree with something. It really wouldn't hurt you to listen to some people. Like, at the committee meeting I went to last Wednesday, Mr. Ramos—and I'm disappointed he's not here tonight—tried to give his opinion, which differed from everybody else's. He tried to give his opinion, and the chairman of the committee put an end to his talking, whereas you let everybody else take as long as they wanted to say whatever they had to say. I think that was a hard, hard, bad way to run a meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else on the consent agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Winona Bateman, and I'm a citizen of Missoula. I'm also a part of a new citizens group called Families for a Livable Climate. And I'm just here tonight to thank you for the work that has been done on the resolution, item number two, and for the community forums to have discussion about it, and for all the support and research that has gone into the effort. When I think about the future of my family right now, and I think about what these other women were talking about, and I think about climate change, some days I have really hard days. And what I'm looking for as a member of a family—and of course, we're all members of families, whether we have children, or we have a spouse, or we have a dog—we consider ourselves part of a family. And we all plan for the futures of our family, and I am just really grateful to live in a community where we're asking hard questions, even though we're not perfect, and we're trying to find solutions that work for most of our citizens. So thank you, and good night.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Jenkins, 1211 Cooper Street. I also agree with Candy Matthew Jenkins. I think that this is becoming communist, and I believe that Agenda 2030 should not go through, and I do not believe that you speak for me, and I resent the fact that you do not put it out to the public first before passing a resolution such as this. And I think that it shows ingratitude. A lot of people in this town came here because they don't like the big city. They want to get away from the big hustle-bustle, probably a lot of the pollution. Great. But I think it's ingrateful for all the people that do put forth the effort to keep this a clean city and make a living to take their tax dollars, and because it makes you feel good, to promote an agenda to not consider those who make their living. Because the necessary—taking necessary steps does not define what that will do to people whose jobs depend on making that energy the way it has been done. And great strides have been made in this country compared to other countries. I suggest those who want to clean up the planet, and more power to you, but don't do it with my tax dollars, and don't do it in a city that I love over my wishes to make a living in this town. A lot of responsible people have made this country what it is, and this city what it is, and they work hard to do it. And I think it's an insult to talk about it the way that folks have and to subscribe to a UN agenda, instead of leaving in our local power to do so in a free way. We have an Environmental Protection Agency. We have laws that keep people from polluting. If those laws are violated, by all means prosecute.
Anyone else on the consent agenda this evening? All right, seeing none. Any questions or comments from council members? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, City Council and Mayor Inge. My name is Deanna Dewire, and I just also wanted to stand up in support of item two on the agenda, the Clean Energy by 2030. I think it's a really great resolution, and I think that you all should be very proud of the work that's gone into that. I think Amy should be very proud of the work that she's done, and it makes me very proud to be a member of this city, and thank you for that.
Thank you. I miss anybody else? All right. Questions or comments from council members? Mr. Von Losberg?
Thanks. I'll keep it brief. I made some comments Wednesday committee. I want to thank Amy for your leadership in this regard relative to the energy resolution. I want to thank Diana from the county and Chase for the good work and for your work with scores of people in the community who were interested in this. I'm really pleased to support the resolution. I want to thank all the folks that came out on Wednesday and the folks here again tonight. And briefly mention that actually what this activity is about is arguably the most free-choice, consumer-choice-oriented way to go about this that you can imagine. It's customers of a regulated utility agreeing to work and have dialogue around more choice, around the energy options available to us. It's not about forcing anything on anyone, and I've been really encouraged by some dialogue with Northwestern Energy, and there's other people interested in helping us make this transition as well. So thanks to all the people who've worked on this.
Further discussion? Seeing—oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am too in support of this. I also, like President Von Losberg, made a few comments during council committee meeting last week, but in case all of you scatter after we pass the consent agenda, I just couldn't help but make a plug for the fact that here, while we're passing this resolution, a very important resolution, that by no means, I think, takes away our focus from the immediate needs that so many in our community have. I think we can balance two priorities simultaneously, the immediate needs as well as the long-term vision. But the majority of our power comes from Northwest Energy, and right now, Northwest Energy is trying to get a bill through the legislature that will allow them to buy another 150 megawatts of coal power. That is moving in the exact opposite direction of what this resolution is trying to address. So I know that all of you came here to support that. I would hope that you would go and contact your legislators, encourage them to not vote for SB 331, and it's most likely going to make it to the desk of the governor, and so please take the time to call his office, voice your concern, because we need a partner at the state level to help make these really important climate steps move forward. So thank you so much, and I look forward to supporting this.
Further discussion? All right, seeing none. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Anderson.
Yes.
Anderson votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Kears. Kears votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. And West. West votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? That is nine ayes and three upsets.
And the consent agenda is approved. I'm unaware of any comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, or the community forum this evening. We have a number of proclamations this evening, ladies and gentlemen, whereas there is an alarming escalation of international, national, and local incidents and rhetoric directed against immigrants, refugees, and people of faith, as well as rising nationalism and xenophobia in Europe and elsewhere. And whereas we are Americans who value freedom of religion and want to create a positive environment where we can learn from each other's faith, and whereas Missoula has a long history of embracing diversity and dignity for all people by statute and practice, and whereas we believe that an open dialogue doesn't demonize—I'm sorry—that doesn't demonize any side is critical to address the fears and concerns that exist, and whereas we want our community to be a place where all people feel welcomed and appreciated, now therefore I, John Inge, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, hereby recognize the week of April 8 as Celebrate Religious Freedom Week in Missoula, a week of learning and dialogue, understanding, and celebration of the heritage of our Muslim citizens, friends, and visitors. We invite the people of our city, county, and region to participate in a series of events this week aimed at building positive relationships among us. I was just at the opening dinner for that event, and there were lots of people there enjoying lots of food and having good conversations. Next, ladies and gentlemen, the nation's mayors—whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as cost-effective strategy to meet cities' needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters, and whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and provides education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors to support national service, representing a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions. Now therefore I, John Inge, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim April 2, 2019, as Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service in Missoula, Montana. And that came to us a little late, but better late than never. Ladies and gentlemen, whereas for 50 years Planned Parenthood of Montana has provided the city of Missoula with quality health care, medically accurate education, and advocacy for individual rights, and whereas the people of Missoula have benefited from quality health care, including lifesaving cancer screenings, birth control prevention, testing and treatment for STDs, Breast Health Service Pap tests, sexual health education, information, and health counseling, and whereas today is part of a year-long celebration acknowledging supporters and individuals who have promoted and protected the right of every individual to receive safe, accurate, timely, and affordable health care in a respectful environment, and whereas for the last 50 years Planned Parenthood of Montana has empowered hundreds of thousands of Montanans to make informed health care decisions for ever-changing the way they live, love, learn, and work, now therefore I, John Inge, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim the week of April 8, 2019, in Missoula as Planned Parenthood of Montana Week. And, ladies and gentlemen, whereas excellence in education is vital to the success of our city, and in Missoula, we seek to instill each child and adolescent with a good education, and whereas by preparing our students for the responsibilities and opportunities of the future, education develops the intellect through lessons on literacy, math, and science, and whereas Rebbe—the Rebbe, Rabbi Menachem Shearson, dedicated his life to the betterment of mankind and tirelessly advocated for better education for all Americans, and whereas he taught that education should not be limited to the acquisition of knowledge and preparation for a career, but also on character-building, with emphasis on the universal moral and ethical values that are the basis of any peaceful civilized society. And whereas the United States Congress has established Education and Sharing Day USA as an annual national day to commemorate the Rebbe's achievements, and the lessons and vision he set forth are relevant to all of us today, now therefore I, John Inge, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, hereby recognize the 16th of April, 2019, as Education and Sharing Day, and we call upon educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to young people and work to create a better, brighter, and more hopeful future for us all. And Rabbi, you're here this evening. Would you like to give us a little color?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for including Missoula in this great American tradition that's been going for about four decades, counting. In a world rife with divisiveness, it's important that we be able to come together on issues that we all agree are most crucial for the betterment of our society. Education Day honors and recognizes the work and vision of the greatest Jewish leader of the 20th century, Rabbi Menachem Shearson, universally known simply as Drebe. Drebe is a Hebrew term for teacher or spiritual guide. But Drebe wasn't only a Jewish leader, he served as the world's moral consciousness during the time period of great social change, and he urged greater attention be paid to the seven universal laws given to Noah following the great flood, which until today serve as a universal bedrock of legal and moral code. To understand that these laws and this moral code is not just a way to control the population and a way for people to escape punishment, but as a way to better society, a key to a brighter and more elevated society. And as a leader, Drebe had unparalleled ability to focus on the needs of the individual even while dealing with issues of global proportion. And Drebe taught that we all carry responsibility to better the lives of others, and that we have the potential through small and big, random acts of goodness and kindness to affect real global change. Drebe taught that even change on a global scale begins with the individual, especially with the youth in our communities. Drebe believed that values-based education is the key to a better and more decent society, being that the youth are our future. So in a broader sense, Education Day is not just about bringing awareness to the type of education, what to add to the education in our curriculums, et cetera, but it's also a time to take up a higher calling of social and moral responsibility that we all share, and to believe in the inherent goodness of mankind and to act upon it. May the City of Missoula, and Mayor Inge, and all of you who dedicate their lives to public service— Engen, and all of you who dedicate their lives to public service, be blessed with peace and prosperity, and may you all be able to recognize the goodness in your lives and share it with those around you. Thank you very much.
Rabbi, would you tell the people who you are for the record, please?
Rabbi Cheski Vogel. I direct the Chabad Jewish Center with my wife Rachael, which has got here in November, and enjoying every minute so far.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Thank you.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, I will pass on communications from Mayor. We'll begin general comments from council members with Ms. Merritt.
Sorry, I was unexpected there. I just wanted to note that it is Sexual Assault Awareness Week, and there are lots of activities going on at the university, which I am sure you can find online if you're interested. Thank you.
Ms. Harp? Ms. Anderson? Ms. West?
So I just wanted to remind folks that there is a needle drop-off behind the Burn Street Center at 1500 Burn Street, if there are individuals that are needing a safe spot to dispose of needles. And I also just briefly wanted to say that climate change isn't an agenda. It's real, and scientifically there is consensus that this is happening, happening in human change caused by human influence on our ecosystems. And then, one more thing, there are, one of the other things we dealt with during the committee meetings on Wednesday was having a wildfire resilient community, and there are two more wildfire preparedness seminars coming up. There was one tonight, and I hope folks attended that. There's one coming up on April 17th at the Best Western Inn from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., and there's a final seminar on May 8th at Target Range School from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Jack Cohen, who is a retired wildfire biologist, will be giving presentations, and hopefully neighborhoods and landowners can manage their properties and, you know, do small things to help our community overall be more resilient in the case of a wildfire event.
Mr. Hess? Mr. Von Losberg?
When your parents have trouble accessing city council and television, they just show up in Missoula. So, welcome to my mom and dad. Actually, they're here to celebrate my daughter's birthday. She turned seven today, and I wanted to make sure that's part of the official record.
Ms. Kears?
I wanted to speak in support of the proclamation regarding the Day of Recognition for National Service. As an alumni of the AmeriCorps Vista program, I truly believe that it does a swell job engaging citizens, improving lives, strengthening communities, and my first extended interaction with the mayor was when I was an AmeriCorps member, and it was one of many things that led me to applying to run for city council. And so, thank you to the Corporation for National Community Service. Thank you for those in the audience today that are serving as AmeriCorps members. I appreciate the work that you're doing for our community. I know you're not getting paid enough, but please keep it up. Thank you.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Armstrong?
Just dovetailing on the other Julie's comment, it is, all of April is an awareness month for human trafficking. We don't call it sex traffic anymore, we just call it human trafficking. And the Red Sand Project is a project that some of our state legislators and local officials get involved in, and if you are walking down Higgins and you see strips of red sand in the cracks in the sidewalk, that's to remind you that there are people that get lost in the system. So this year's event is on April 24th, and it will be starting, it's actually kind of an all-day thing from noon until 5:00, but you can go down to the Jeanette Rankin Peace Center and participate in that, get some sand, and think about the folks that need our help, and be part of that project. Thanks.
We have no committee reports this evening. We have two items of new business. The first is a resolution to amend, remove, or relocate an alley barricade. I can't imagine anyone's here for that this evening, but we'll see. Just seeing if you're still with me, folks. Mr. Hess, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor Engen. A motion to reconsider is, needs to be considered by someone who was present in voting and voted on the prevailing side, and I was absent on March 18th or on March 25th when this was taken up, so I believe Ms. Jones is available to put this on the floor.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you. Since I was present at the meeting, I think I have standing to make a motion to reconsider, so I'd like to make that motion. I know that we had some notice issues regarding this matter, and I am also aware that there are some residents and people that live in that area that had information and opinions they wanted to provide on this matter, so I'd like to make the motion and open it up again.
That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Does anyone, no, this is a procedural thing, folks. So, my hunch is that council will support considering the, reconsidering the item. So, if you'd like to speak on just the motion to reconsider, you're welcome to do that. The time for the rest will follow. Scaredy Joff? Are you going to speak on just the motion to reconsider? No.
You bet. I'm John Wilkins. I live at 501 Fairview, and I would really hope that you do reconsider this, because there are some things maybe you didn't know, and I would definitely like to get that out. Please reconsider this.
You did very well, John.
I've had practice.
All right, with that, on the motion to reconsider? Okay. Let's not snatch defeat from the jaws of victory here, counselor.
I'm sorry, sir.
Let's not snatch defeat from the jaws of victory.
I can't. I'd just like to thank you for making the motion in this particular case. I have a, my client has a plethora of witnesses available on this matter, on this very issue. I won't call them at this point, but I would like to be heard on the, how the matter I believe has been resolved. The matter's been resolved, I believe, by an accord between all of the property owners.
And again, counselor, I'll, happy to hear that when the motion is on the floor. Thank you. All right. Any discussion on the motion? Did we do that already? I don't remember. Okay. All right, we can have a voice vote on this. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion had to carry by two-thirds, and that was unanimous. Now, Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Mayor Engen. I'm going to put the original motion back on the floor so that we have an item to discuss here. So this is a motion to adopt a resolution to rescind Resolution 4765 and remove the alley barrier behind 2413 South Higgins Avenue, install speed bumps, and a right turn-only sign.
That motion is in order, and I'm given to understand that there have been some changes afoot. Mr. Monroe, are you aware of?
Thank you, Troy Monroe, Assistant City Engineer. We've heard some conflicting information on that, so we'd like to just proceed as an open hearing.
All right, so the motion is before the body. Counselor, do you want to describe what you're thinking here? And let's see if we can understand if there's some concurrence? Is that better? No? Is that better? Okay, thank you.
I'd like to outline basically what I understand the accord between the property owners is. And the accord between them is that basically all the individuals that have property that's affected by that barrier have agreed to move the barrier consistent with the initial recommendations of the engineer's office, the first option they listed, move that back to the property line that bisects the Hoagieville property from Helen Petrov's property. So that'd mean moving it down the alley a ways to the south toward Livingston, and putting it there. As I understand it, all agree to it, Mr. Yale, who I don't represent, who's been helpful in this matter, is the fellow that has the property immediately to the west of Helen's property, and he's in accord with this, but wishes a caveat. And as I understand it, that caveat is principally because he's disabled, has a cane, he would like to see if he could obtain, as part of this, on the record, a disabled parking spot. But that's the only change. The comment, and lawyers have to comment on something, I believe, I guess, the MCA that's used for the purposes of this notice, et cetera, is, I think, isn't really appropriate for this particular kind of case. It's a parallel statute, but the statute that's used is a statute that is for vacating areas. So if 100% of the landowners that are affected petition and you approve it, you don't really even need to send notice, as far as I can tell. But in this particular situation, I believe notice is necessary because the landowners aren't petitioning for this. It's petitioned by someone else, or just one of them. And I believe that's consistent with the statute. If you look at MCA 7-14-4114, that's what you glean out of it. And also, the prior decision was based on the assumption, I looked at the transcript, I don't want to bore you with the transcript, but the decision was based on the assumption that the owners had no objection. And of course, they do. The objections contained in all the documents I've filed as far as this alleyway is concerned. They never really got the opportunity to discuss it. We attempted to bring it up initially at the initial hearing on the matter, with, had to do with the zoning and the hours of operation, but were told at that particular time that the alleyway would remain closed, and that that would be heard, if at all, at a future date. So that was not a matter that was subject to discussion. I believe that the opening does certainly ignore the majority of the people that have interests in the property. And there are certain advantages in doing the work, as I've discussed. First of all, it limits, it limits the traffic along that roadway to pedestrians and bicyclists, and I believe that's a good thing. Well, the big problem is that Domino's, which was the source of the initial resolution was passed, and when Love Girl was mayor, was passed in 1988, Domino's Pizza was the problem. They were coming down that road all times of the night, et cetera. I checked with Domino's Pizza today. They're open from 10 o'clock till 2:00 a.m., Monday through Thursday, and on Friday and Saturday, they're open from 10 o'clock to 3:00 a.m., making deliveries. The Tippel LLC, the corporation that owns Hoagieville, I mean, the LLC that owns Hoagieville, is, has obtained this way, will obtain access to South Avenue, as required by the Highway Department. I also believe another advantage in doing it as proposed is that precedent of 4765, that resolution, is preserved, since nothing has changed at all since that happened. If we do it this way, there's no additional or very little expense to the city, just moving the barrier. And five, the fifth reason, it's consistent with the first of the three of the four engineering options that were outlined by, in the initial hearing. And if you look at, look at that, it reads, "They support the relocating the barrier to a location in the north-south alley just south of the driveway approach to the tavern parking lot." And that's the first recommendation of them. I think that that's a, that's a good one. That makes the most sense. That preserves the peace for some citizens and also gives to LLC the access, et cetera, that state requires. Most importantly, as I understand it, this is a consensus of the landowners that are affected on the alley. And I, I think that's, they got together, discussed it without counsel, got together and discussed it, and reached this agreement. Let's, we all want to put this matter to bed, and I think that's a, that's a good way to do it. So, with that said, Tom Hightower is here. He's the son-in-law of my client, Helen Petrov, and he has some words to say about this. Also, we have quite a few witnesses in support of this position and this engineering barrier removal, and, excuse me, relocation. And I would yield the floor now to Mr. Hightower.
Well, I'm still running it, so. I'm happy to hear from Mr. Hightower. Is Mr. Goble here? Okay, so I heard accord in property owners, and Mr. Goble was among them. I'm interested in what you're thinking, sir?
Chris Goble with 2413 South Higgins, the owner of Hoagieville, also the owner of the future-brewed Tap House. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this public alley, city-owned alley, not my alley. I want to really stress, this is not my alley. This has become me owning this alley, making the decisions. This is, again, is not my alley. Last week, we did sit down and discuss all three options on the table from there. I planned a meeting with the city engineers, went and spoke with them. I was reminded, this is not my vote. This is not my alley to make decisions. Therefore, I would like to, again, state that I support. This is a city alley. This is your decision. I am 100% behind whatever you guys decide, what is right and what is best for that block on behalf of the residents, as well as the business owners. We stand behind whatever you support. I would just like to please reiterate that we're getting to a point where we need a resolution, because we submitted our building plans in December, and this resolution is the last thing holding us up from getting our building permit. We're to a point now where we're losing money. We're about to lose subcontractors. We need a resolution to this matter. And again, I stand behind whatever you guys decide on those three options. I just please ask that we have access to that alley. That's the big part. We need access to the alley. Again, I appreciate your consideration from Troy City Engineering, from the residents, and from everybody else. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goble. Mr. Hightower?
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us and reconsider this motion. It's greatly appreciated. I'm, my name's Tom Hightower. I live at 516 East Kent, a few blocks away from the son-in-law, Helen. I've been asked to kind of outline our position from our meeting and our get-together. At the 2419 conditional use hearing, as the council, our counselor mentioned, it was brought up that there was no plan at that time to open this alley, and the city engineer at that time said, or the development services indicated that that was the plan. And at that point, we all left that hearing assuming that the alley wouldn't be opened. So, we weren't looking for a notice in the paper when this thing was reconsidered. So, that's why we all missed it, or we would have been here two weeks ago. So, we apologize for that. So, in order to prevent more problems, we got together, Lori and Sean, Mike, and the rest of the family, with Chris, last week, and we met and we discussed the options. In that meeting, it was noted that Helen and Keith are adamantly against opening that alley to southbound traffic. Adamantly, both of them. And it was also noted that Hoagieville needs access to that alley and needs it to go, and we all thought that was fine. We understand they need that access. We'd like to see it to the north, and we'd see the alley remain closed southbound. That was our position. At our meeting, we all felt that that was pretty much decided on and agreed upon. That was before Chris talked with manager, the city manager, the engineer, about the, if not being a, being a public alley, if not his alley. And we understand that it's not his alley. We were just thinking that if the guy with Hoagieville... We were just thinking that if the guy with Hoagieville agreed with us, and we had a meeting, then we could all come to an accord and present it to you. So that was where we came up. So the alley itself, as it is now, is for like 31 years, has been a pedestrian, bicycle access. The local neighbors use that place, the kids, to go down that alley to access South Avenue, to go on beyond, to use that controlled intersection at South and Higgins, to go wherever you need to go, bicycle riders, whatever. If you put traffic down that alley, then the people, the pedestrian and the bicyclists, it's such a narrow alley, they won't use it like they would. And it'll become a traffic corridor again. And then those people will be forced to go out to Livingston and Higgins to cross that street and around that corner. And I just don't think that's safe. And we really like pedestrians and cyclists in this community, and I think it is a really great access there. We feel that opening that would be a problem for Helen, her back door is literally five feet from the alleyway. When Domino's was driving down that alley, they literally sprayed gravel on her house at times, because they would come down there so fast. They're open till 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning on the weekends. They will use that alley if it's open. You could put a sign or a speed bump there, but the fact is, that doesn't stop people from using the alley. They will continue to use it, we feel. So we would request that you reconsider and move the barrier to the property line between Helen and Hoagieville, and close the alley to southbound, and let Chris have his access northbound to South Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower.
Thank you.
So, and I'm going to be happy to invite more comment. I'd sort of like to, this has turned into a committee meeting, which is fine, and I used to run one, so I'm going to run this as if it were. So we're going to be a little more loosey-goosey at this point. Mr. Hess, given what you're hearing here, given no objection from Mr. Monroe, do you have any interest in amending your motion?
I'm, I guess what I'm very interested in doing is, you know, there's a lot to balance here. I obviously want to get this resolved quickly, so that our applicant can move forward. And so I want to be, you know, I want to make sure I'm hearing everything that what we ultimately move forward with is satisfactory to them. So I guess my first question, maybe question, to frame how this goes together, is whether or not, and maybe it's a question for Mr. Monroe, but whether or not there is a mechanism by which we can get a building permit issued to the applicant, if this remains pending. If that's the case, I'd think we should have this in committee and work it out. If that's not the case, and we have to get this resolved, then, you know, obviously would support doing that.
Mr. Monroe? I'm sorry, ma'am. I will hear from everybody. I just want to sort of understand the lay of the land here, but...
Thank you. Troy Monroe, Assistant City Engineer. I believe that we could issue that. It would set a bad precedent, though. We tend to kind of want things in a whole before we approve anything, and this is a pretty important piece. Their site plan that was brought forward during their conditional use did show this alley access as being their second point of entrance, and so I think it's important that that gets clarified, preferably before building permits issued.
But any of the options before the body, Mr. Monroe, provide that alley access, correct? I don't need to see him again, Troy. I just need to know. Nope. I just need to know.
So, yes, so we were presented with three different, we presented three options. City Engineering is in favor of all three of them. They all provide access for the Rude Tap House to reach the alley. Our preferred method was to open the alley entirely. It not only helps with the Rude Tap House, but it also helps with garbage pickup and other kind of deliveries from the alleys and stuff. So we would be in favor of all three of the options. Our preferred was what was approved by council on the 25th of March.
Okay. Does the option proposed this evening by neighbors provide adequate access?
It does provide adequate access for the Rude Tap House to access the alley. We spoke with Republic Services, and if designed appropriately, they hope they can make through movement from Higgins onto the alley. Their preferred method would be to come straight up from north to south and not have to do turn into the alley.
Okay. So we can issue a building permit?
Can you clarify that?
So I think we issue a building permit that's conditioned on Tap House having access to alley.
Two hundred and thirty-three options.
And this option is among them. So I think we can move forward with building permit, so we're not holding them up on that. Then the decision before council is to sort this, and we can certainly do that this evening, or we can do it another time.
Sure. I'm sorry, ma'am. May I?
Please. No. We throw out all the rules here tonight.
I've also fallen into the informal committee structure. So I would support that, and I would like to, one of my concerns about this is that I know that, as originally presented, this would cause the applicant to incur more expense, because they would have to pave more of the alley. And I would like to really tease that out, because I think that it's very important that the applicant is able to, you know, to move forward and to not have these unexpected expenses. So I would like to have this back in committee, and under the understanding that these are, you know, pretty unusual circumstances, so we're not setting a precedent. We're just, it's not every day that council 30 years ago made a strange resolution that we need to resolve. So if it's okay with everyone else, I'd like to have this back in committee, have the building permit issued, and address this resolution, you know, on a parallel track.
Without objection? Okay, so this item can return to committee. However, you're here tonight, and I am happy to hear from you. So what just happened is we've got Mr. Goble taken care of in terms of his ability to get contractors lined up and get going on what he needs to get going on. Council wants more information from you all and professional staff with regard to the functionality of the alley, other information. So what they are doing is they're sending it to a committee to review on Wednesday, when you have a chance. Do you have a sense of when that might be?
Give me just a moment on that.
You bet. So now we've gone from, and someone apologized for the notice issue. That's on us, and I apologize to you all for that. No need to apologize. And now you have a lot of notice, because we're going to continue to consider this. All that said, Mr. Hess is going to come up with a committee date, but you're welcome to speak to the notion tonight. Council won't be taking any action tonight on the barrier, but happy to hear from you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Emily Hall, and I'm the owner of Art Addict Framing and Design, located at 123 South Avenue West. I'm really excited about the proposed new Tap House, and I think it'll be a great addition to the neighborhood, especially given the conditions put in place. And I thank Mr. Goble for agreeing to pave the alley, the north-south alley. So much of the council discussion has been on the adjustments and improvements to the north-south alley, which is expected will receive the largest share of traffic exiting the Tap House. However, there has been little discussion on the east-west alley, other than the hope that customers leaving the Tap House will follow the directional sign pointing to the north and not turn south or continue straight. My business abuts the east-west alley, and I'm concerned that there will be drivers that choose to ignore the directional recommendation. Since the east-west alley will remain unpaved, the additional traffic will bring significant wear and tear to what is already beat-up accessway. There is also a small house that sits immediately on the property corner where the alley meets Lester. Because the house is located on the property line, vehicles exiting the alley have very restricted sightlines, which presents additional safety risk. To address these concerns, I request that either the north-south alley be formally designated as a one-way northbound, or that the east-west alley be signed for no through traffic or local traffic only. As I mentioned, I'm in full support of the proposed Tap House, though I do request a minor consideration regarding the east-west alley. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkins.
So, Mayor, councilpeople, persons, I'm John Wilkins. I live at 501 Fairview, about five blocks away. I used to live about four blocks away. I'd been in that neighborhood 40-plus years. I remember when that alley was closed, and it was closed because there were vehicle wrecks. A lot of Domino's cars would sit out there, and people would run into them. And then Domino's, I think, misused that alley when they had it open, and sped up and down that alley until their closing times at 2:00 and 3:00. And I'm afraid that would happen again. So my thoughts, I mean, I haven't heard of all these other things, but my thought is to leave that alley closed. That house, Helen's house, sits, I didn't even think it was five foot off that alley. And I know she's had problems with rock spraying the house, and getting in the garden, and getting that sort of thing. And she's lived there a long time, and she's at the age where things are hard to change. Things are hard to, change your sleeping habits, her bedroom's right there. And I've dealt with Helen before on other things through my time of representing that area. So my wish is probably to leave the alley alone. Go was the first thing that was Chris had when this whole thing was okayed. I'm looking forward to the Tap House myself, but there was a plan there, and it was okayed. My understanding is that the city engineer came along later and said, "You got three things we need to do, or we're not going to issue a building permit." Is that the way we do business in Missoula? After we pass something and everything's supposed to be great, and we're ready to go on with it, and then we have an engineer come up and tell the applicant, "I'm sorry, things have changed. You got to go three ways here, or you're not going to get a building permit." That doesn't seem right to me. And I think this whole thing is kind of a farce. I hope we don't treat other developers like this. Chris Goble's a good young man. He's got a good plan, and it'll work for him. Going to change that alley, at least keep it closed. Don't go by that Helen's house. Keep that the way it always has been. It's enough problem the way it is. And, you know, someday you'll probably get the whole corner blocked, but you're just going to have to wait. And I'm a really firm believer that you need to keep that alley closed. And I'm really upset the way all of a sudden the city kind of puts their fist down and say, "You got to do it my way or the highway," and that's kind of what happened here.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Yes, sir.
I'm Keith Yale. I'm the property owner on the west side of the alley. And I would, as was just stated, prefer to keep the alley just as it is. Okay, that's my inertia. On the other hand, I'm certainly willing to consider the other options. As a retired professor of mathematics, I noticed they did some hard work in geometry, and it came up with three proposals. One was to completely remove the barrier. That's totally unacceptable to me. We've had terrible experience in years past with that. The other is moving the barrier to the property line between Helen's and Hoagieville. That would be acceptable to me, but very inconvenient. Inconvenient in this way. Many years ago, the, a variance was, a parking variance was granted by the city to the apartments that are across the street from me. At times, I can't even park in front of my house, because there are apartment dwellers parking there. It's very difficult for me to park in the back, even if I had to drive around, just because I'm handicapped and I don't have a sidewalk in the back. But in summary, moving the barrier to between the property line just past Helen's there would work for me okay. I could do it. I would probably like to be able to get a handicap parking sticker dedicated to me in front of my house, just because I anticipate when there's full occupancy in the apartment houses that I would not have any parking. Well, this is the second time I've talked to you. Let me remind you, there's a marvelous line in Alice in Wonderland where anything that is said three times is true. I hope you will believe what I say is true with only two appearances. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yale. Anyone else this evening? All right. Well, council will take this back up. Mr. Hess?
I'd like to take this up this week, if that gives everyone enough time. We do it at 8:30 this Wednesday. If we need additional time, we could hold it till the following week, but I think I do, I would hope to get this resolved. And I'd like to add one thing, if I may. This is a really weird situation, and I think, and I just want to say that I have found, I've found Chris and his team to just be an absolute joy to work with. This is not an issue of, this is just an artifact of bizarre local government activity from, you know, more than 30 years, you know, 30 years ago. And it is, you know, absolutely no negative comment on anyone associated with it. The applicant team has been great. The neighbors obviously have, you know, very valid concerns, and it's a little bit unusual to work through an infrastructure piece like this in a public forum like this. So I just want to acknowledge that it's a strange situation, and that there's a solution hiding in there, and as long as we can get the building, you know, the project proceeding and come up with a resolution, I think at the end of the day, we can keep everyone happy, or reasonably so. So I'll leave it at that, and I'll do my best to get there on 8:30 a.m. Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Hess, and thank all of you for coming down. I appreciate that. Our other item of new business this evening is legislative update. They are continuing to plug away, as it turns out. Heard today that they may be interested in adjourning early, which is a combination of, we can only hope. Anyone have anything for the good of the order with regard to the legislature? All right. Seeing none of that, are there any additional items to be referred this evening? Seeing none, any miscellaneous communications, reports, petitions, or announcements? I have one. Happy birthday, Austin. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we will be adjourned. Thank you for your hard work.